I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Present.
Strong.
Here.
Stransky?
Yep.
Mary Gonzalez?
Present. All right, please take notice due to the provisions of the Governor's executive orders N 2520, which suspend certain requirements of the Brown Act, and the order of the Health Officer of the County of Mendocino to shelter in place, minimize the spread of COVID-19, our plan. The city council members will be participating by teleconference or video conference in the special meeting of November 10, 2020. All right, brings us to item 10, Presentation by the Economic Development Financing Corporation Annual Report, commonly known as EDFC. And I see they're sharing their screen.
Bear with me a second.
Kathy is sharing this. I am going to mute now and take it over as Kathy gets in.
There we go. What?
That's the homeless plan.
Kathy, I think that's the PowerPoint.
Yes, I see that.
Looks like Stan and Riley is going to be here tonight.
Where did it go? Bear with me, it went away. Sorry all, I was here earlier and now it's gone away. Do you have it right there?
Yeah, I'm emailing it to you once it finishes loading.
Yeah, it's trying. Apparently I'm having issues with email tonight, too.
Kathy, I have it open, is there any way I can share it?
Um, yeah, hold on real quick Diane. My apologies, everyone.
It's the joys of electronic living.
Problem is my desktop and everything is not connecting this evening. Actually, nothing is connecting Diane, I'm very sorry.
Am I able to share?
No, nothing's connecting. They all have a copy of it, I emailed them, the PowerPoint.
Yes, Moe, I have mine PowerPoint as well.
You want to just try to log off and log on again?
I would have to close the meeting down.
So, I could just say next slide.
Yeah, why don't we go ahead with that and I'll keep trying all.
So, we're ready?
Well, they each have the PowerPoint, so if you want to go ahead and just tell them next slide on your end, they can change their pages.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, that'll work, yeah, we can make do. All right. So, without further ado, I guess, good evening, Honorable Mayor Jerry Gonzalez and council people. Thank you for giving us the time on the agenda to let you know what's happening with EDFC and hopefully give you some, well, maybe a refresher on some old information and then maybe some new information. And hopefully, you know, I think in these economic times, we all are looking for every bit of good news that we can find. And so, I think one of the things that we see happening with the move 2030 and then the different things that we've been doing at EDFC, and then working with the cities and, for example, working with Ron, and see, I think there's just been a lot of collaboration and it's been really refreshing to see a bigger, greater effort being made towards working together in the county. And I think there's a coming together that we see happening and I think that good things are in store for all of us. And so, I believe that's the attitude that we are taking at EDFC with our board and with our staff and the things that we're working on and towards. And so, I guess that would be my preface for the presentation. I would say that we are hopeful and that we have some good things on the horizon. And we've had a great program year actually at EDFC in spite of everything. So, with that, we'll go to the slides. So, my name's Jesse Burnett and I'm actually a little bit of a transplanted Native American. I'm originally from the coast up north, my tribe is the Hoopa Tribe, but I've been working with tribes and non-tribal organizations in Lake and Mendocino in Northern California for the last 20 years. So, I do have a breadth of experience, I've been on the EDFC Board for nine years and due to a, well, a comedy of events and circumstances, it turned out that I became the director as a, to meet the need that EDFC had for a director in the middle of July. So, I've been on board as an interim director since around July 15. And then we also have our operations manager Diane Simmons and our loan manager Robert Gerner, who has been on board just over about, I think around 14 months. So, next slide. So, just real quick, EDFC was a big idea in 1994 and it was at an economic development meeting in Mendocino County when the incorporated cities of Point Arena, Willets, Ukiah, Fort Bragg conceived and created the idea of EDFC as a vehicle for economic development. Next slide. And I think it was the great, it was a really good vision of the founding leaders that understood the economic value of working together, especially, you know, due to the rural nature of the area that we live, along with the hugeness of the geographic area that is Mendocino County. But it was that vision that has generated 25 years of EDFC success. And I think that's an important milestone because, you know, this business is not, I would say it like this, this business is not for the faint of heart and what I mean by that is that you just really have to have a lot of faith in what you're doing and putting faith in the people and in the process and being able to stay afloat as a loan fund while managing the risk that is inherent in business, it's a great achievement, it's a great feat that EDFC is still here, so. So, EDFC staff and operating budget, so next slide. We currently have three staff members, Diane is operations manager in charge of grants and project coordinating, Robert's the loan manager, again, which he's been on board about 14 months, and then he also does technical assistance with our business plans and underwriting. And so, I just want to mention real quick that Robert, Roberts, prior to having Robert, EDFC only, you know, the most staff we've had was two people prior to Robert coming on board. And then we even, you know, we had a part-time bookkeeper, we've always had a part-time bookkeeper. But, so for Robert to come on board with the staff, I, we just know that since he's come on board in his first program year, he did over a million dollars in loans and I don't believe EDFC had ever done a million dollars in a year before that. And so, it's just a huge addition to, well, first of all, it's attributable to Robert's skills and applying himself to do the work, but also it's been a great help to the organization to be able to have a person that is just focusing on originating the loans and doing the underwriting and really being out in the community doing the work. And so, Robert, Robert's also done any other things in addition to that, so. And then I don't want to minimize Diane's contribution either because Diane has had to fill in a lot when we've been down a director and when we've gone through some transitions, so Diane's also contributed a lot, so we really do have a good staff. So, the operating budget was approximately $255,000 for last year and just so you know, our program year runs from July through June each year. And so, if you, as you look at the slide with the, the next slide with the graph, our operating income sources, you can see that our local government support is 26% and that's out of our total operating income of, rounded as 255. So, so the contributions that we receive from the cities are vital and important to helping us keep the doors open. And so, every, every bit of contribution is needed for us to continue to function and operate. Next slide. So, in addition to being a loan fund, we've also, EDFC has had a history of helping to lead different projects at different times in the community. One of the major ongoing projects that's still happening is, for example, the broadband project. We were a very large part of helping that emerging project and become, well, what it is today. EDFC had a lot to do with assisting with that process. So, in addition to the lending, you know, we've listed here the job creation and business development, technical assistance, the economic development outreach, identifying and developing economic development projects, applying for grants to support economic development and then leveraging opportunities through collaboration. And so, we've really developed, I guess, I would say, the toolbox and the resources and the network to do these types of economic development, to be able to provide these services. And so, I believe that our board and our staff, we are versed in having the capacity to do this and I believe that we're in a good place right now. Next slide. So, EDFC results and highlights for the past year, we were, we did secure EDA grant funding in the, with $800,000. And so, with the matching funds, that's $1 million and those are loan funds. We also applied for additional EDA grant funding, which is under the COVID, I believe, Diane can correct me if I'm wrong about that, but that was another $500,000. And then, as I said, we've closed loans in the amount of $1,154,000 this fiscal year. And, and here's a great stat, the jobs, new loans help retain or create 92 jobs. And so, also just to let you know, there was an evaluation that was done of EDFC by the county and there was a number of positive statistics around job development and also around the multiplier effect for the loans that were bringing into the community through the business development. And so, that multiplier was, I believe it was like 1.72 multiplier, which is a very good number for the economic impact that EDFC is bringing through the work that we're doing. And so, just to let you know, so the evaluation was very favorable, so as soon as that evaluation is, it hasn't been published yet, the county is in charge of that and so, we're awaiting the time when we can share that good report with all of the cities and all of our partners. So, lastly on the list is the COVID impact. We were able to offer deferral of loan payments to all business clients in March, over half took advantage of the deferral and so, we were able to help our, our clients through that process or through that situation. So, lastly, the loan funds that currently are available that we have is $1,800,000. And with that, I believe I'm going to hand it off to, is it Robert or Diane?
It's me. You can switch over Kathy to the next slide if you'd like. All right, so this is probably going to be hard to read for everybody, I'm not quite sure, it's hard for me, but at least I know the information. This was just to overview kind of the geographical layout of our portfolio and see where we're touching in the county. And I think for the point that I'd love to make with, with our loan funds is Willets is only comprised of about 2% of our loans right now and I'd love to see that number increase. We'd love to grow our portfolio within and around Willets and some of the smaller cities. And we've been working really diligently with Ron and the city, the chambers to, to find new and innovative ways to get funding out to businesses because by nature of EDFC and what we do, we fund business clients that are not able to access bank financing. So, we're a high-risk lender by nature and we're also able though to be really flexible and creative with how we lend money and it does have to be paid back, it's not grant funds per se, but, but we can get really flexible with our clients and, and really work for what's best for each individual business when we do loans and pay them back. But we have two loans right now in Willets and we'd love to see that number increase and just have a bigger representation of the smaller cities in our portfolio. Go ahead and, next slide. And then, just the connecting money with ideas or, yeah, with ideas and entrepreneurs, these are some of our highlights. And one of the loans we have in, in Willets is Scoops and Sheet Metal Works and Ukiah Brewing were two loans that we closed within the last fiscal year, both really different businesses, but really encouraging stories, really good businesses that weren't able to access bank financing and they're, you know, for various reasons and not maybe so obvious, they didn't have terrible credit, they didn't have, you know, major things going wrong in the background, it just didn't fit the bank's criteria. So, we're really able to help impactful businesses that need to be there and secure their properties and their, their equipment, you know, for the future to serve in this county. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So, our historical lending in Willets is about $207,000 and in the portfolio currently there's about $50,000 of loan funds. And like we said during the pandemic, we offered deferrals with no interest accrued, so we were able to pause what was going on for our loan clients and really try to assist and help them address what's going on in the economy around them without putting them out of business by paying loan payments. So, I feel like that was a really valuable asset during that time. We've also had low-interest loans for, for businesses that are looking to change or do something different during this time and just stay on their feet, so we've had that offered and it's still being offered. We also partnered with the state to get 294,000 surgical masks and 17,500 bottles of hand sanitizer, which was like 42 pallets of stuff that we worked with the chambers and merchants associations and anybody we could really get on board from all our outlying cities to, to touch everywhere. And Willets did a phenomenal job and I can't thank Ron enough for reaching out to Leightonville, Leggett, Covelo and making sure our whole county was represented in who got to receive these things because these were for businesses to operate safely and be available for their customers and, and clients. So, it was through a massive effort and collaboration that we were able to and are still, I believe, handing out more masks and sanitizer to those who are in need and in business. So, that was a fantastic effort that we all got to put together. Next slide. I think this is Diane or Jesse.
I guess it would be me.
Thanks.
So, this is a very recent development, but Bron and I were having a conversation because we really do want to make a, more of a intentional and concerted effort to provide more loan activity in Willets and to Willets. And so, one of the things Ron and I had started a conversation about was creating a small, a small pool of loan funding that would be low interest and probably a 36-month term, but to help the local businesses to improve their storefronts and their facades. And so, so anyway, I sent out a conceptual, an initial concept paper today and so, we will be following that up for sure because we really want to, we really do want to help, you know, Willets and the businesses in Willets to improve and increase, you know, your, your traffic for your businesses. And so, I think, you know, and then along with that, I think that would, that'll be a great opportunity also to, to get on the radar of, of other folks who are in need of potential financing for either startup or expansion and, and so, to let people know about the loan programs we offer and also let them know about the, the microloans and the low interest that we're able to offer potentially. So, also, another thing that we've talked about, that we're talking about with the cities that we want to get on the radar with Willets is we're looking for a community-based large project. Just to let you know, so EDFC is actually what is called a CDFI and you know how the federal government loves their acronyms and long names. So, a CDFI, if you're not familiar with it, a CDFI is a Community Development Financial Institution. And so, it's really actually a great thing because it gives us access to funding through the Department of Treasury, which is both grants, grant funding for loans and then at times there's a match required and, and there's other times when, I believe, there's not a match. And so, they've also helped us with, providing us with funding with technical assistance. So, becoming a CDFI though is really vital, it's a vital part of, we believe, of the future development of, of EDFC because it also gives us access to other capital for doing larger, potentially larger community development projects. And so, so, and those can be, those projects, for example, there could be different elements to one project. So, for example, you could actually have a project that, that integrated and incorporated not only business development, but potentially housing and even if, if there was a need, a daycare center, where that you could actually create a, a larger type of project that meets these, that's multifaceted, that meets the needs of a community. And so, we're looking at developing this larger project and, and we will be doing this. We're, one of our partners in, in the lending that we do, just to let you know, is Arcata Economic Development Corporation. And so, Ross Welch, he runs the agency up there in Arcata. And Arcata Economic Development has been very successful with these types of projects that I'm describing. And so, that's one reason why we're looking at partnering with them because they already, they have done it and they have the know-how. And so, so we really want to, so we're letting the cities know that we, we're looking for the right place and the right opportunity and the right project. And so, we're wanting to work with the cities and identifying a place and a project that would contain the elements that are going to benefit your local city. And so, anyway, it's an exciting thing and we are definitely in pursuit of identifying the right project. And so, I have also been in discussion with Ron and some of the other city staff regarding that potential project and so, we're going to be moving forward as far as, well, one of the things that we're going to do next is we're going to be, we're going to be coming up to Willets. to visit, uh, some of the different properties that are available there. So, um, next slide.
So just a little bit so you understand where we get our loan funds, which, which is the kind of the, the biggest focused activity of EDFC. Um, until recently, all of the funds that we offered to businesses were through USDA Rural Development. Um, a, a microloan program and then a larger business loan program. We do, we do have loans from about 5,000 up to 250,000. Um, but in the last few years, we've been able to secure grant loan funds, which is a real shift for us. Um, we have to pay back the USDA money. And if we have any, um, loans that go bad and we have to write off, we still have to come up with the money to repay those loans. So these new funds, um, are, of them are from the Community Development Financial Institutions Funds as a CDFI and then also the Economic Development Administration. Um, we're excited to have these funds. It, it creates a whole different lending experience for staff. But we still have a tremendous responsibility to make sure our lending is very responsible. Um, we have been able to find a much better loan loss guarantee program through the California High Bank. Um, until last fall, when we did our first loans to them, our loan loss issue was significant. The, the other program we used really didn't, didn't cover the issues. Um, and we also are partnering with Arcata Economic Development, um, for loans when the, the, when the borrower needs more than 250,000. We just closed one in Fort Bragg, um, where they partnered with us. And we have the opportunity to bring in more than 250,000 loan funds. Next slide please. Um, we've also been a, an important partner in the County Move 2030, um, Resiliency Plan. Um, that, that project has, um, made a lot of progress. There was a big, um, uh, stakeholders meeting today to cover the progress so far. Um, there was a lot of input across a variety of jurisdictions, max, um, community organizations, businesses, and there, there are now a collection of action projects that were developed by a variety of stakeholders to prioritize. It's going to be a 10-year plan. Um, and there was a lot of information by economists that were also used to sort out priorities. Um, it's very clear though that the success, success is not going to be up to the jurisdictions. It is going to be, it must be a strong public-private partnership in order to. Okay, next slide please. Jesse, I think it's yours.
Okay. So this, this is what I mentioned, you know, that we're working to build our capacity utilizing our status as a certi, as a certified CDFI. And, and what the intent of that is to open up more funding for bigger projects that cities or communities in Mendocino County, uh, you know, that's going to benefit those places. So we want to increase the opportunities to better serve, uh, Willets and, um, all the cities and the jurisdictions in Mendocino County. We're also working towards increasing our portfolio, which again, um, last year we had a banner year and we're on schedule. Um, I just had a conversation with Robert yesterday where we're at as far as our lending is. And so we're on schedule this year to, I believe to beat what we did last year as far as lending. Um, but you know, when it comes down to it though, the, the lending does create the interest income from, from the loans. That does help us to, um, to not only to, to pay for the operations, but to potentially, um, so create the matching funds for us to be able to access other loan funds. So, so increasing the portfolio is vital to keeping the doors open. And hopefully that wasn't too painful. No, we just want to say thank you. Thank you for giving us the time and, um, you know, we believe, we sincerely know that Willets is an important, you know, inland community. I love, I love, I was sharing at our meeting with the city managers, I, I love going up to Willets during the summertime when it's hot because I love the evenings up there when the cool breeze just blows through the mountains. So, um, I love the place. And, um, so I just want to thank you for everything that you're doing to address the impacts because we know that you're dealing with the bypass and then of course we're all dealing with COVID. And, uh, but we just want to acknowledge, you know, all your efforts and I want to also thank Ron for his efforts and we're working hard to, to work with you guys to increase our presence there in Willets. And, um, I believe we're going to have a, a good future, uh, working together. And so also want to say that I know we probably, you know, I know we, we gave a, an overview of broad strokes, but if you ever have any questions beyond what we go through here, you know, of course if you have any questions now, I'm happy to answer. But if you want to get into some details, I'm happy to talk. So I, I just want you to know I made myself available and I'm glad to discuss with you any concerns or ideas or questions around the programs or services that we're offering. Uh, and I just encourage you also to get Robert's number. And if you know anybody that needs a loan in the Willets or the area, that, um, Robert is very good at what he does and he really does work with people, uh, to get them to a place where that what I call, uh, is loan-ready. He's really great at helping people get loan-ready. So, so thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Jesse, your quick question and then I, it's about the cameras raising your hand.
I was going to wave goodbye.
Oh, okay. Um, is there any industry or any, any sort of folks that wouldn't qualify for a loan or send them all your way?
I'd say send them all our way and let us, uh, let us work with them once, you know, if they're not quite there yet. There's been, uh, several we've worked with, uh, in and around the area. I worked with a lady recently out of Fort Bragg who, we worked together for eight months to get ready for her loan, uh, for a food truck. And so she wasn't ready when we first met, but, uh, we, we laid the roadmap down and we worked together and stayed in communication and eight months later she improved her credit, improved her cash flow, was really in a different place than she was eight months prior. So even if they're not ready that day, uh, if they're willing to, to stick it out and get there, we'll, we'll make it happen.
The, the only thing I would add though is because all of our, our funding sources are federal, we cannot do any loans in the cannabis, um, industry.
Okay. Uh, I'll see if there are any questions from any of the council members. All right. Any questions from the public?
Well, Jerry, you know, I have to say something.
Go ahead, Ron.
Well, I must say that, uh, one of the good things that came out of the COVID-19 situation and, um, some of the other issues that we've had is this greater collaboration, not only with the Chambers of Commerce, but with EDFC. I must tell you that we have, uh, got a great partnership going. Um, when you look at the Mask Up Mendo Program that we started, we couldn't have done that without the EDFC and Robert and Jesse and Diane and their work, uh, helping that. And it is, I mean, we've given out over 100,000 masks over across the county so far and still supplying other businesses as, as needed, as well as the sanitizer too. One of the great things, uh, I must say that the loans that they've made here in Willets has really helped young employees get jobs during the summer and during the school year to learn how to actually keep a job and be on time. It's been really very important in that respect that I've spoken to the businesses and, and how those loans have helped. The other thing is, um, when we look at what we'll be able to do as we transition with our Main Street project and use the city to more and more there, uh, you see that it's important to be able to let the, the shop owners and the business owners look to see if they can get low interest money to be able to change their faces or paint or do whatever they need to do to beautify downtown. And I'm not just talking downtown, but also out on the Miracle Mile. Safe track we have in town, I guess. But with the collaboration we've had with EDFC, I have never seen it stronger in the 10 years that I've been involved. And it's been such a delight for them to, to see that they want to help Willets and the businesses here. It's, it's going to be a great growing experience too. I want to thank you all for everything you've done and, uh, I, I see some great things coming to Willets.
Thank you, Ron. Uh, again, thank you to Robert, Diane and Jesse stopping by today.
Ron will make sure your checks in the mail for all those good words, my friend.
Right. This is just on for presentation to the rest of the folks out there. So thank you very much. We're going to move on to our next item.
Thank you.
That's going to be item three, presentation discussion of proposed traffic calming project at the intersection of Highway 20 and Coast Street and Blosser Lane.
And we have, uh, hi, this is Stephanie Gilbert Sierra, City Manager. We have Joseph Caminiti from Caltrans, um, who'll be giving our presentation today. And I, I saw him on the line. Hopefully he's on the, still on the line.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Yeah, definitely. Um, I'm joined here, uh, with Robert King, his project manager. So I'm gonna let him start off and then I'll take over from there.
Okay, well, thank you, Joseph. Um, so, um, you know, Joseph and his, he's the designer on the project and he's put in the lion's share of the work on this project. And, um, as you know, this is, this is a, uh, a, a funding document that we put together to help assist with, um, applying for funds, maybe from ATP. And I just want to like assure you that, uh, Caltrans is very committed to this, um, project and we are looking for ways to fund it. I, I'm gonna let Joseph explain the, um, project more. If you guys have some questions about the funding, um, I can get into that a little bit more later. So Joseph, would you like to take over? Thanks.
Yeah, definitely. Um, yeah, so we started working on this, I think about a year ago. Uh, and so, you know, Incog, um, raised some concerns about this intersection. Um, basically what's going on here is you have residences to the north of Highway 20 at the intersection of Blosser Lane and Highway 20. Um, and then you have Blosser Lane Elementary along Blosser Lane. And, you know, it's a pretty dangerous intersection, high speeds and everything. So, um, you know, we were asked to do something about it. So about a year ago, it was last November, uh, we held a walk audit and, um, you know, we, we met with different people. We met with residents near the intersection, um, you know, Blosser Lane Elementary School Principal, the city Willets, Asherwood Valley Band of FOMO, um, County Public Health, Walk and Bike Mendocino, Incog and other Caltrans members. Um, so we all went out there and walked and, and talked basically and just talked about what our options are out there and what the main concerns are from the community. And what we heard, uh, from the community at that meeting was, you know, that the number one thing was to slow traffic. Um, you know, the speeds through there posted are 45 and 35. They change right at the intersection. Um, but you know, in reality, people go a lot faster through there. Um, so the, the number one thing was to slow traffic. Um, they also wanted to shorten the crossing. Uh, the crossing is, I think it was something like 80 feet, um, when we went out there. The crosswalk's very long, um, so it's a very wide intersection and that's to accommodate truck, uh, truck traffic, uh, mostly. Um, also increase the visibility of the crossings. That's another issue we have here is it's on a horizontal curve. It's also on a vertical curve too. Um, so those compound to make sight distance kind of an issue, um, at this intersection. Um, also, uh, we heard that they wanted to, you wanted to create a sense of arrival into Willets. Um, you know, traveling on 20 is, is rough. It's very curvy out there and everything. So you're, you're just want to, you want to get done with it. You know, you're coming into, into Willets and you're going 55 miles an hour, you don't realize you're in the city yet. And so that was another thing, um, was to create a sense of arrival. Um, you know, also of course feel safe for children trying to cross the intersection, crossing from the residences to Blosser Lane Elementary and back, um, and accommodate the truck traffic still, you know? Um, so a lot of competing, competing factors there. Um, and so, you know, we considered, you know, of course cost and constructability when we were looking at this and talking about it. Um, and so, you know, we, we met up at Blosser Lane Elementary and we walked down to the intersection and discussed there. And we came back and had, had a discussion and we, we drew up some options. And so the four we, we talked about were a roundabout, that's something the community was interested in. A, something called a, a protected intersection, um, uh, which is basically a design that comes from, uh, from the Dutch. We don't use it very much, but it's catching on. Um, and it just creates a safe environment, uh, for pedestrians and bicyclists at intersections. And I'll go over that more later, uh, when I show the layouts. Um, then another option we considered was a pedestrian bridge, um, you know, one going over the, over the highway or under it. Um, and then just some other traffic calming measures before the intersection to try to slow traffic down. Um, so at the end of this, uh, the two that, uh, we, we decided to move forward with, with investigating in the PID phase, our, our phase here at Caltrans, uh, was looking at the protected intersection and the roundabout. Um, and so one thing that happened, which is, uh, kind of exciting, uh, we had our, our traffic safety, uh, chief there at the walk audit, uh, David Morgan. And he ended up having a project, um, that was putting in curve warning signs around our district. Um, and it, it ended up having some extra money in it. And so he, you know, we, we quickly came up with some ideas and some, some improvements for this intersection that we could use that funding for. Otherwise that funding would have just gone away. Um, and so the things we came up with, uh, were, so currently at the intersection, there's, there's one radar feedback sign pointed at, uh, eastbound traffic coming in, you know, from, uh, 20. And so what we did is we moved that one out away from the intersection and added another one for the other side, you know, so you have eastbound, westbound. Both now have a radar feedback sign and it's, uh, going to be something like 500 feet before the intersection on both sides so that people get the idea, look, you're coming up to, to something, you need to slow down. Um, we also added, we, we changed up the striping for the crosswalk to make it a higher visibility crosswalk. Um, and also added a little painted bulb out on the northeast corner, uh, to kind of tighten up the intersection a little bit. Um, we added rectangular rapid flashing beacons, um, which are the ones, you know, you, you walk up, push a button and the little pedestrian, uh, symbols start lighting up or there's little beacons underneath them that start lighting up. So we added one of those to the crosswalk. And, uh, we also added advanced warning beacons even where, you know, you push that button, the ones at the crosswalk, uh, light up. But then about 300 to 400 feet before the intersection, on both sides of the intersection, you're going to have big flashing beacons, both sides of the road light up only when somebody pushes that button. So that way people don't get used to the flashing lights on all the time. They only flash when somebody's trying to cross. So again, more advanced warning, uh, for drivers coming up to that intersection. And so this project is going to go into construction sometime this month, um, if it's on time. It seems like it's, everything's moving smooth. Um, so you guys should see those improvements sometime soon. Um, and so where we went from that, uh, was we're moving on to the project initiation phase at Caltrans, uh, which is the first stage for, uh, projects. Um, and basically what we decided to do was make a state-sponsored, uh, document. Usually, you know, if we have the funding secured for for the project, we will do this and then it moves on to future phases, you know, environmental design, you know, to work out the details. Uh, but for this, we don't have funding secured and, you know, Robert can answer questions on that later. But, but basically, um, we don't have funding secured for the later phases, but we're, we're making this document so that, you know, either MCAG or, or City Willets or whoever can take it and apply for funding, maybe through ATP, uh, or other funding options. Um, and so for the PID, like I said earlier, we went with two alternatives, the roundabout and the, uh, protected intersection. Um, currently it's in first, uh, circulation, which is our, uh, we have two, two circulations, but the first circulation goes out to most people. Um, and so we've sent it out to, uh, people who are at the walk audit to get comments back. Um, and, you know, we incorporate all that feedback for our second circulation, which goes to internal, uh, executive members. So, um, and our final PID is expected in December. Uh, might come a little later because, uh, first circulation comments were due on the sixth, uh, but we extended it for, uh, more public comment, um, and for some of our internal members to comment too. So, uh, but yeah, sometime in December is what we're hoping for, for that to be done. And so next steps, um, from there could be MCAG, you know, City of Willets, like I said, applying, uh, for funding with this PID. Um, and yeah, after, uh, the other project I was talking about that we're going to have done here in, uh, November, hopefully actually constructed, um, we might evaluate the speeds after that because we're hoping the, you know, just something being new there, you know, new flashing beacons, new radar feedback signs will slow people down at least initially. And if we could take, you know, the speed results there, we can, uh, maybe reduce the speed limits there. But we have to look into that, um, and see if it's, you know, see if it's working. So, um, yeah, that's the project overview. Um, I don't know, can I share my screen at all? Is that possible?
Joseph, are you looking for the maps?
Yeah.
I can bring them up. Bear with me. I think I have it this time. There we go.
Great. Um.
What's a PID?
Yeah, it's a project initiation document. Um, it's a document that we make, uh, it's what we call our K-phase. It's our, basically our first phase of project development. Um, and that's the document that the whole phase is trying to, to get, get, uh, completed. So yeah, for these plans here, so this, this first set, um, this first page is just kind of an overview to orient people when they first open this up. Um, so you can see the intersection there. Um, twenty coming across from left to right, you know, and then you get your main intersection with, uh, uh, Main Street, Willets there on the far right. Um, and north is straight up. And so if you go to the second page. So this is the, uh, first page for our alternative one, which is the protected intersection. Um, so another part of this was, um, there's something called, we, we have a nickname for it, Oregon stripe. I think it's pretty common up in Oregon. Uh, so you see that picture there on that page, you see the normal stripe you used to see in, in the center of the road. And then you see on the top of the image, there's, you know, the two lines, two center lines are on the outside of the markers. Um, and what we've been using that here at Caltrans for is to indicate to drivers, hey, you're, you're coming to something different. You're not just traveling down a highway anymore. Um, and so we've used it. That picture is taken, uh, in Lucerne. I think we used it, uh, up in Del Norte County and near the Smith River area. Um, so part of alternative one, the protected intersection is also to place that striping down, um, from roughly Copley Lane to the intersection with Main Street, um, except at the intersection of Blosser Lane because there's a lot more going on there. Uh, just to, to further indicate to drivers like, hey, something's, something's different here. Um, and also what'll be, um, you'll see the yellow little lines. I know this is hard to see on the, on the screen, at least for me it is. Uh, but the yellow little blobs there are, uh, maintenance pullouts for our maintenance workers to be able to, uh, access the electrical equipment that we've installed or will be installing. Um, so yeah, the other thing I forgot to mention on the CRG zero fifty, the, uh, project being constructed in November this month, um, we're also putting in two lights at the intersection as well, um, to help light up the intersection at night. Um, so that'll be something else maintenance needs to access. Um, yeah, if anybody asks questions while I'm running through this, just feel free to interrupt it and, uh, not me. Um, can you go to the third page, please? Thank you. So there's a, a lot going on here. Um, kind of, even for me looking at it's kind of difficult to tell what's going on. But basically, let me move this over here so I can see better. Um, basically what you got going on, um, you got Blosser Lane on the bottom of the page going south, you know, north is straight up. You got Coast Street and then twenty's running from left to right. And what we've done is, uh, we've looked at the plans that the City of Willets, uh, has. Um, so there are plans along Blosser to put in, uh, bike lanes and then, um, also to put sidewalk on the eastern side of the road. And on Coast Street, uh, eventually they, we would like to have sidewalk on the east side of the road as well. And so, um, you know, when we were looking at pedestrian, uh, crossings, um, you know, we really wanted to minimize, uh, what, how many conflicts there were basically. So we didn't include a crossing on the western side, only on the eastern because the sidewalks are going to be on the eastern side. So that's why you're going to see little white dashes coming across the roads. Uh, they're only on Blosser Coast and the east side of twenty. Um, and so another, uh, thing here. So basically you're going to have a combination for bicyclists and pedestrians. Uh, pedestrians on the, on the east side, your blue stripes on that east side, on the right-hand side are the sidewalk. And the green you see there on those two corners is where your bikes are going to go. Uh, the little red you see, little red dots, those are going to be raised concrete islands, um, to help, uh, you know, this is where the protected intersection gets its name. It's kind of protecting people from, obviously a, a car or truck could, in theory, get over it, but it'll deter, heavy deterrent for vehicles. Uh, so you got that. And then the kind of pinkish or lighter red, orangish is going to be some kind of textured pavement, um, or colored maybe to indicate to drivers, uh, normal vehicles, you know, to go around it. They could easily drive over it. It'll be at, at the regular pavement grade. But, uh, you know, it's to indicate to them to go around it to kind of tighten that up. And the reason we couldn't just push out the raised islands is because of truck turning. Um, so we, we tightened it up as much as we could with concrete and then, you know, the textured pavement, um, is what we could do to tighten it up even more. And then on the left half of the intersection, those two corners, the western side, since there's no or little pedestrian activity anticipated there, um, instead of putting in sidewalk, which can get pretty expensive, to save some money, we just put in, uh, pavement back there and we called it a, a shared use path. So if there was a pedestrian over there, you know, they'd be sharing with bicyclists. But most of the time you're just going to have bicyclists over there and all the little green hatchings coming across the road are the bicycle crossings. Um, and so you'll see we did include a bicycle crossing on the western side, but not a pedestrian crossing. And the reason why is because, uh, we like to have bicycle traffic traveling the correct way with traffic. So if we had bicyclists come onto the wrong side of the road basically and cross, you know, it's, it's something that we try to avoid. Um, and so we deem, you know, that side safe enough, uh, for this preliminary, preliminary design at least to put a bicyclist crossing. And that's something we're going to look at if this project is funded in future phases. Traffic Safety wants to look at it, but for now we're, we're keeping it. Um, and yeah, that's, that's the basic, you know, uh, elements of this. You know, we'd have to adjust some of the facilities we put in with, uh, zero G zero fifty, which is a project going in, in November here. So like the lights and everything will have to be adjusted. Um, but yeah, that's about the scope of work for alternative one. Um, so anybody have any questions on that? Yeah.
Joseph, um, so just to put it in perspective, what you just explained, most of it would be starting and then when you talked about the roundabout, that would be kind of a future sort of concept that brought in? Or is the plan to move towards a roundabout but do this first?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, that would be up to, you know, locals and everything, but the kind of idea is to have them be separate alternatives. Um, like this would be one or you would pursue the roundabout. Um, you could in theory put this in for many years and then replace it with a roundabout. Um, but this in and of itself would have to be completely removed if you put this in to construct the roundabout.
The roundabout would require funding to be secured and in place. So.
Exactly.
Say anything you could do in here and there. Is that correct?
So, um, I think, Jerry, I'm going to clarify. I think what you're thinking of is the project that's going to be completed this month is not this project. We are going to have a project and that will be completed. And then the future project, we're looking at two alternatives. And this is alternative one. Does that help?
That's, I, I think that, I thought that was the case, but I kind of wanted to kind of throw that out there for everybody.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that clarification. Yep. I don't have the, the plans for that project in November are pretty, they're detailed because they're in the design phase. Um, and I don't have them with me. But, um, yeah, what I described earlier is what's, what's going on.
All right. Greta had a question then, Madge. So Greta?
Can you tell us what the yellow is, um, just east of the intersection? It's kind of crosshatched on the south side of?
Yeah, yeah. Um, so that's one of those maintenance pullouts since, that I talked about on the last sheet. Uh, but since it's zoomed in now, it's, it looked more blown up. Uh, but that would be one of them. So our maintenance crews can get in and service, you know, service all those electrical things. You got the two, the two lights there in the northwest and the southeast corner, you have the rapid flashing beacons. We would also add another one of those for the bicyclist crossing on the western side of the intersection. Um, so you would have, you know, flashing beacons on both, both sides of the intersection. But one of them would be for bicyclists only and the other one would be for both bikes and beds.
Madge, you got a question?
Yeah. Um, so obviously, um, the project that we're going to have this month is already funded, but, um, the, there's no funding for either alternative one or the roundabout alternative two. Could you, do you have any rough idea about what we're talking about in terms of, uh, how, how much more expensive is a roundabout than, than this design?
Yeah. Uh, so rough numbers, nothing, nothing secured yet, but, uh, something on the order of about four million for this intersection design here. Um, and that includes, uh, an overlay from Copley Lane to, um, which is just, you know, thin layer pavement, uh, from Copley Lane to the intersection with Main Street for that striping, um, upgrade because right now the pavement's pretty poor condition. That might be taken care of by our maintenance crews, uh, which would be great because that would cut, cut some costs from it. But, uh, somewhere in the three and a half to four million range for this. For the roundabout, somewhere between ten to fifteen million. And I'll explain why it's really expensive, um, when I get to alternative two. But it's, yeah, it's very expensive.
Thank you, Eric. Larry?
I should, I should just clarify real quick. Those are all-in costs, which includes, uh, cost like, like support costs, which are, uh, you know, basically the time that, you know, Caltrans is going to put into doing it. Um, so that's, that's like all-in costs as much as it would be. So.
Joseph, Larry, I'm going to ask you had a question.
Larry, go ahead.
Uh, I'm looking at sheet three out of five. You know where I am? That's the nice-looking intersection, number three out of five. Do you know where that is?
Yeah.
It's, it's called the bicycle crossing. Okay. I think that it needs to be something like this for the simple reason as people come over this, this shows a flat sheet of paper and this intersection is not flat. It drops down from way back on down and you cannot see this intersection from, and I don't know how the distances are, but I would say back down to where, uh, the sign is that, that, uh, that Caltrans has put up to say, you know, that the lettering sign that says watch out for deer or whatever it says. You could not, from that point down to the intersection, you could not see this intersection. So if you're driving down here, and my thing is always that we get a lot of vacation people that are coming across and they have a great big trailer and they're going pretty good because it's straight for a while. And it has to be some kind of intersection like this that's really different colored to get their attention to know that they're going to have to start slowing down. Because I was with this group of people that went to this intersection the day that we went to it and logging trucks and people with trailers and stuff, they're driving sixty-five miles an hour across this intersection. And never even knowing that they're going and across the street and on the north side of the, of the, the east side of it, there's a, a sign that says how fast that they're going and they never see it because they're on it and pass it by the time that, that they recognize that that's what's going on. Because you're really covering a lot of space. And so it's going to have to be something that has a lot of color to figure out so that people know that this is a little different intersection and not trying to break the bank by having a roundabout or something. I think this is a good start for it. And I'm on MCAG and we went over this on the first of the month. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. Um, yeah, that's a lot of what, uh, what we heard at the walk audit too, the same, same things. Uh, so yeah, thank you. Yeah. Uh, the, uh, I think as far as the color, that's a good, a good point. I'll make a note of that. Uh, because right now I think the only things that we have colored potentially are the, the raised concrete. Uh, so maybe we could look into maybe coloring the, the bicycle areas and stuff too, uh, to make it more, you know, stand out. And we're hoping with the, it's, uh, the project is zero G zero fifty, the one coming in November that's got funding and is being built with that one. Um, we're hoping that, you know, by having radar feedback signs on both ends, you know, not right at the intersection and just one of them, that will slow people down. We, we tried it in, uh, Smith River, um, on one oh one. Um, and it worked there. We actually started, we started getting complaints of people going too slow. So, um, we're hoping for that. That would be great.
Joseph, uh, Greta had a question.
Yep.
Um, so that brings up an interesting question. How, how will you monitor, um, once this November project is put in to see how successful it is and how much traffic has slowed?
Yeah. So we can, uh, have to check with our traffic safety, uh, chief and everybody there when we can do it. Um, but basically they'd go out there and take a speed survey. Um, and that's how, you know, speed limits are set. You have to, you have to look at how fast people are going. And so we're hoping that, you know, with people going slower, hopefully with all this new stuff out there and, uh, everything and the radar feedback signs, then we could hopefully lower the speed limit, which would help people go even slower in theory. Not saying, but that's our hope.
And do you have like a timeline for that? Like is that something that's done three months after the project is completed, six months, a year? I'm just curious how that's built in.
Yeah, definitely. I'll have to ask on that and I can, I can get back to, to everybody on that. I'm going to know that.
Hi, Joseph. Uh, this is Robert. Um, so, uh, we can talk with David Morgan about that, but I think some of the issues, um, you know, with the COVID and having less, um, traffic, I think we're trying to delay some of those studies, um, till we can get a little bit more accurate information. But I, I'm speculating right now. I think I do recall though that, um, they're trying to use some sort of multiplication factor to try to estimate from a, a smaller sample size what that would really be. But now that I'm saying this, I feel like maybe I shouldn't have said it all because this is a, this is like a, a speed study. People are going whatever speed they're going. So maybe I should not say anything and just keep my mute on.
No, you're, you're.
Sorry about that. Sorry about that.
Oh, you're good, yeah, so that's, that's good to, good to point out, that traffic is a lot different nowadays because of COVID, so. But yeah, I'll ask about that, and I'll get back to you.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
This is Andrea Trincato-Plater, I'm a project manager for the city of Willis. And just on this option, I was curious how, how far the crossings, the pedestrian crossings are at this, with this option?
Yeah, definitely. So I'm trying to remember offhand, I know the Coast Street one is shorter. Let me, uh, let me see where I can get that, I haven't written down. Maybe shoot another question, and I will open.
Okay, yeah, sorry. I just, I couldn't get a clear idea from, from this plan. And then the, the textured pavement sections that are showing as like that tan color there, does the idea that the trucks, when they, when they make the turns, will, will cross those, those textured pavement sections just to make that turn?
Exactly, yeah. So we, you know, we don't want people, we don't want the trucks going over anything raised, we would get a lot of complaints. And then also people behind the pavement, the raised concrete would feel safe and protected, and then if a truck drives over it, you know, they'll get hit. So, yeah, to delineate that, we're like, well, how could we tighten it up, you know, but still let trucks pass over it? And so we, we came up with the idea of textured, some kind of textured pavement, maybe painted, but we have to, you know, talk with maintenance. It's kind of a trade-off, because, you know, if it's getting run over all the time, it's going to wear off really quick and everything, so it'd be something we have to talk with maintenance about. But something to delineate that from the rest of the pavement, to deter people from just zooming through there really quick.
Yeah, okay. And then I, I was reading in the, the report that there was a study of the intersection, and I was, I was surprised that there were so much, so many pedestrians crossing that section. It was in excess of 100 people in a day, I believe. I'm just curious with what Robert just said, if, you know, I realize we needed to do a study to get an idea of what was going on in the intersection with pedestrians and traffic. But I'm just curious about the timing of it and, and the COVID effect on it. You know, it could potentially be, be more people crossing there, even with, without the improvements. I guess, yeah, I was just curious about that.
Yeah, give me one second here, I was pulling up that crosswalk thing, okay. There we go. So we took the survey, let me, let me pull it up. We took the traffic count survey, looks like back in September of last year, actually, even before the walk audit, so before.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so it's pretty.
2019, okay. Okay, great. And then the other, the last question I had on this option was, I'm just curious about the shared use area on the west side and the crossings over to the west side, since it's not really planned for, for pedestrian improvements on the west side of Coast Street or Blosser. Is this just to provide, provide pedestrians kind of a safe refuge if they, if they are crossing that direction, even though it kind of won't go to any pedestrian safe facilities?
Right, yeah, that's a great question, and that's exactly what it is. We, if you provide, you know, crossings on three legs, you can get to any side of the intersection, you don't need the fourth one. And so, yeah, we've actually talked about that a bit, like, do we even need on those sides, because there's not much over there? But, you know, surprisingly, I went out there for site visits about, I think, three times, and one of the times I went out there, I was way down by, maybe halfway between Copley Lane and Blosser Lane, you know, there's nothing there, I was on the side of the highway looking at something. And like, two or three kids walked by me on the side of the highway with no shoulder, I'm like, what, what are you guys doing? But anyway, so, you know, if they get to the intersection, we want to provide them a way to still cross, so that's why they're there, even though there's not much on that side.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, definitely. So on the bicycle and pedestrian counts, it looks like, yeah, September 2019, it was Thursday through Sunday is the measurement we took, and there was an average of 29 peds per day and 16 bicyclists per day. So that's how that ended up working out. And then for the crossing distances, let me pull that up here.
I pulled that up, it's, it's 70 feet, it's not actually a whole lot shorter than it actually is already along the long distance, but I think like Joseph said, we put the, we put the edge line out there, so it, the, in the area of conflict with the normal automobile is much shorter than it used to be. But we spell out the islands, the protect up where the pedestrian start is about 70 foot for the crossing.
Yeah, 90 feet existing before Zero G Zero Fifty, the one coming out, because it's got a, it's got kind of an angle shape to it, you can kind of see in the image there what's existing, those two, two bars. It's actually about 90 feet, and then, yeah, the new one will be somewhere around, yeah, about 60 to 70 feet in that range. And then the coast crossing is about 35 feet, and the Blosser is about 50. And the, the reason the Blosser is so much more is because that's where the trucks are turning. There's not really truck traffic going up coast. We used a, a design vehicle, I think of like a 45-foot bus and fire trucks, things like that, whereas on Blosser, we use fairly large, like logging trucks, things like that.
Uh huh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, definitely.
Gary?
Go ahead, Gary. Uh, this is, this is Larry again. The, the thing that, that bothers me is that this year with the COVID, we had more people that were going in RVs and trailers and stuff because they couldn't go other places like motels and whatever. So there was a lot more traffic this year in '20 than there was in '19, just because the people were in a RV or in a trailer or in something that was self-contained, where they could keep theirself over on the coast and not go to the, you know, through the motels and these types of things. And I noticed that there was quite a bit at the intersection, I don't always go down to, to Coast Street and down, but I noticed at the intersection of 101, that there was a lot more trailers and things that were making the turns and going south, and some north, but south. But I think that if you had a survey now in '20 with the COVID on, you'd find a lot more traffic. Thank you.
Definitely, thank you.
Greta?
Yeah, I would echo what Larry says. I have a business on Main Street, and I've been surprised at the level of traffic this summer and fall. You know, there are certain times of day where it's very slow compared to normal, but other times of day where I would say there's even more traffic than pre-COVID. I think it would be really interesting for Caltrans to do some, some COVID studies. I think you'd be sort of surprised what's actually happening out there.
That's good to know, thank you.
Joseph, I just want to see if anybody hasn't spoken from the public, wants to ask you any questions, I'll just, anybody from the public? Anyone want to ask Joseph a question? Suprema, do you have a question? Suprema, councilmember Rodriguez wants to ask a question.
Yes, thank you. First, I'm going to express gratitude to Caltrans for taking this on and in an effort to make our community safer. I have questions about community engagement as the project moves forward, what, what we as a community can expect beyond the group that participated in giving some preliminary thoughts, what other opportunities will there be for the community? And then my second question is, is do we have any data on, we talked about the two projects and the potential of the price tags on them, but what about data that speaks to the safety of each of the two projects? And that, that's where I'm really focused on, is that safety factor. I know that over by the McDonald's area, we put in that traffic calming thing, but there's still been incidences there. And I don't, you know, as a pedestrian, I've crossed it a time or two, and it doesn't feel, I mean, it's safer, but it's not, you know, it's not ideal. So I'm just wondering if we have some data that you'd be able to get to us about that possibility?
Yeah, definitely. So I'll do the first one first. So feedback moving forward, so basically what happens usually for us is, you know, the engineer, the designer, and the K-phase passes on the project on to, you know, environmental design, and so new project engineer gets it, and we can pass along kind of comments to them and everything. And so what I'll make sure to do for that is to make sure that in the comments, several times expressed, because I've already had some in there, but, you know, explicitly, you need to involve the community more as we move forward. And I don't know when that'll be, because it's all dependent on funding. You know, once we complete this project initiation document, it's basically going to sit until somebody gets funding, but definitely when it gets picked back up, you know, I want, I want the, the next engineer to know, like, you know, everybody still has to be involved. So we'll make that definitely clear. And I could imagine more public engagement like the walk audit, you know, maybe some more meetings, something like that, who knows what the post-COVID world will look like, but, you know, at least Zoom meetings. But, you know, I could imagine another walk audit in the future. As far as safety stuff goes, I don't have any like hard numbers, and I don't know of ways to, to estimate it. I know that the, it's, it's kind of, it's interesting. I, I think of a roundabout as, at least for me, I've always thought of it maybe as being safer for pedestrians and bicyclists because you're crossing one stream in one direction of traffic at a time. But apparently, they're not the best things for pedestrians and bicyclists because people aren't really paying attention to the crossing, they're paying attention more to the traffic circling in the roundabout, you know, who can I make it, or do I have to yield? So there's definitely some trade-offs there. But I don't have, I just have kind of qualitative stuff, and I have any quantitative methods. Robert, do you know of any by chance?
I mean, as far as, is your question, is, is the roundabout better safety than the improvements, is that, is that news?
Basically, yeah, comparing the safety.
Suprema? Do you have any data on that? Go ahead.
Sorry, my, my phone froze for a second. That's exactly what I'm looking for, I'm looking for some information that, that, you know, as a, as a taxpayer, I want to know that if I'm spending more money on a project, where my tax dollars are going there, is, is that going to make my community safer? So I think that's an important component of any, you know, any decision or giving any advice in the position that I'm in as to what's best for my community.
Oh, I, I, okay, I understand now. That'd be a question I'd have to, Joseph or I would have to get some more information from traffic safety. I don't want to sound like, no, but I, nobody actually asked me that before, so I haven't actually, I don't actually have that information. But as far as like safety goes, you know, Caltrans likes, a lot of times we like to take a measured approach for a project. Like, you're going to see this Zero G Zero, Zero Project that we're implementing this month, you know, it's, it's kind of small steps, because we don't, we don't really have a funding avenue for this, and so we, we took some aspects from this project, and we're going to try to implement them to see if we get any improvements. And I see Madge has her hand up.
Yeah, just, I.
Did you have a question?
Echo the same thing that I think both Suprema and Greta are, are bringing out, and that is, when we, you know, we're glad that you're going to do this initial project, and then look at how effective it is, and I can, you know, can guess that it'll help some, but it's still a very risky and dangerous intersection, especially with a lot of school kids crossing there. And so in looking at what is the option A or B for the big, more expensive project, it's really important to know what we're getting in terms of safety, because, you know, how much are a few children's lives worth, you know? And if, if the roundabout is safer, and obviously, they're sort of mutually exclusive, you don't want to do this, this project here, and then two or three years later, or five years later, take it all down and put in a roundabout. If we should have done a roundabout in the first place, then let's make sure we've looked at that. So I think it's really important that you, that Caltrans provides some comparative data on the safety of these two options.
Yeah, that's something we could look into as far as the actual quantitative measurements. I'm going to follow up on that, because that's interesting to me, too. We've had a lot of qualitative discussions about it, and just for Robert's benefit, you know, he, he got thrown into this project halfway through, basically, not that long, maybe a month ago, so he, he's not very familiar with this, so. So I don't want him to feel bad or anything about that.
Thank you, Joseph, appreciate it.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, enough, you're good, yeah, you don't, you just haven't been, you know, part of it for as long as I have. So we've, we've talked about the roundabout a lot, and if the general consensus that people seem to have is that, at least for state highways, that the roundabouts are very expensive, and we don't implement them for pedestrian and bicyclist safety, we implement them when there's issues with traffic. You know, people are getting hit all the time, that's why the Highway 20, 29, 2053, Hartman Road, 29 are all being implemented, is they were very bad intersections. And I think, I think the reason for that is roundabouts tend to be not the safest option, like I was saying, for pedestrians and bicyclists, especially when you consider the cost, cost benefit, you know, things. So, so we'll look into it more, but that's just kind of where we're coming from. The one benefit that the roundabout has over the protected intersection, you know, there's nothing stopping somebody from still just flying through on 20 through this intersection. I mean, there's no physical things in the way. A roundabout physically stops somebody from flying through it, it's just where the pedestrians are crossing in a protected, or sorry, in a roundabout, people aren't paying attention to the crossing so much as the circulating traffic, so it's still not very safe. But I'm going to look into that, because I, I think it's interesting, and I'll get back to you guys on that.
Joseph, continue now.
Awesome, okay, yeah, let's, we'll move on to option two. So, next page, please. So this is off-center from the intersection, just because it's kind of big to fit on one sheet. So that's Copley Lane, that road going, splitting the page almost to teeing up a 20. Basically, there's a curve there to the right, and the product, the roundabout would start by eliminating that. And one thing I'll mention, you know, we, in the, in the phase we're in, we don't really get much information, so we're working, we're trying to engineer something with very little information, which is, you know, hard to do. So we've tried to pick the best placement of this roundabout, but, you know, full disclaimer, if the roundabout got chosen, it could totally shift, it could be put somewhere totally different. But this is the best option we thought, because it, it provides the best combination of all things, so property impacts, you know, getting good curvature in there to slow people down, there's a hillside there, so there's a wall, so you got that in there. So all the different things kind of, you know, are nicely put in there, so. Page five, please. So again, this, this is even more to look at than the protected intersection, the colors match, so here you won't see any shared. Um, so here you won't see any shared use areas. You're going to see, uh, blue for sidewalk, um, around all parts of the, the roundabout. Um, you're going to see the red again for the raised concrete. You're going to see that, you know, splitting the, uh, the two lanes of traffic on each leg. Um, and then in the center of the roundabout, of course, you're going to have a raised, a raised island. Um, so, you know, just like somebody was mentioning, you know, this is a 2D, 2D piece of paper. Um, in the actual field, you know, where that center of that roundabout is, you, you have a hill right there, at least to the, just north of it. Um, and that's, that's one of the challenges working with this, with the roundabout. You, it does, you know, for an engineer standpoint, you want a perpendicular intersection, you know, and completely flat. That would be ideal. Of course, we don't work with ideal stuff. So this intersection skewed, you have, um, a curve both not only in the Highway 20, but also in the local roads. Uh, so they're not perpendicular. You got all kinds of weird curves going on and then you got a hill to the north and you have properties everywhere else. And so we had to come up with like, okay, what don't we want to do and what, what would be okay? Um, so, you know, ideally we would place the roundabout right in the middle of the intersection, least amount of disturbance to anybody. Um, you know, but it just doesn't work out with getting the curvature needed to slow people down prior to the roundabout. Um, so we ended up moving the roundabout a lot of different spots. Uh, and finally we had to just pick one and so we picked, uh, this location for it. Um, so there's no properties, like physical buildings being impacted by this. Um, only properties. Um, and the major one we're taking away from in this particular layout is the one to the north, um, which is, uh, you know, a hillside and, and, uh, pretty vacant other than just grass and a tree or two. Um, but anyway, so what that creates is an issue where you have a very big retaining wall to hold back the hillside. Uh, so it's hard to see in this image, I know, but there's a yellow line running along most of the top of the inter, the, the roundabout and another one to the left, top left of the page. Uh, those are two retaining walls and so that's a big reason why the cost is so high. Um, you know, so depending on where you put the roundabout, you have more impacts to people, their homes, you know, businesses maybe, I think there's a couple, yeah, there's a couple around here. Um, or you have high costs, you know, from that or from, you know, building these big retaining walls, building things to make it so we don't impact people. So this is what we came up with. Um, and so like the, the retaining walls, just from a construction cost standpoint, are something like about four and a half million of that, you know, 15, 10 to 15 million dollar cost. Um, and that's about where there's less issues. Um, you know, physical constraints, uh, they're running, you know, somewhere between three and five, three and six million dollars. So, um, just for the construction of it. Like I said, the cost I gave 10 to 15 million, that's all in, so. Um, but yeah, that's most of it. The yellow blobs are still maintenance pullouts here, here faded, your see-through, uh, white is your shoulder. Um, and yeah, I guess I'll open up to questions on that.
Uh, go ahead.
Uh, what is the, uh, crosshatched red? Uh, there's two of them. There's one that looks like you're going to have to redo a driveway, is that it? And then, then just to the south of Coast Street, there's a blob there. What are those? Well, there's quite a bit of those there.
Yeah, I know. Sorry. Yeah, sorry I didn't go over that. Thank you. Uh, yeah, they're driveways. They're drive, they're marking driveway modifications. Um, there's a lot of driveways out there. Um, and that's another one of those physical constraints that are like, okay, it's kind of harsh for roundabouts, you're not supposed to place a roundabout, or at least it's hard to where there are intersect, or driveways, because now you have other streams of traffic entering and exiting the roundabout other than your control, your controlled, uh, entries and exits. So, um, so yeah, so what we did, let's see, this way to do this. Um, so for, starting from the left side, the western side of the page, that leg, on the, uh, northern part of it, there's one driveway up there. You just need some modification. The road gets pushed closer to that, that house. Uh, so you're going to need to modify the driveway. To the south on that leg, so on the left half of the page, uh, you have a long strip of red. There's, I believe, three residences there. Uh, they all have their individual driveways right now. The way the curve of the, uh, that leg goes, it actually gives them more room. And so what we were thinking is instead of having three separate driveways, just kind of make a, make a strip there where they all, you know, like a little frontage road almost, uh, but not fully frontage road, where you have, you know, driveway access for all of those. And they come out further away from the center of the roundabout. The further away, the better, um, from the center. Um, looking at the southern part, the bottom leg, uh, Blosser Lane leg, uh, you have some residences to the east on the right-hand side of that leg. Uh, so just modifying their driveway. The, the Blosser Lane leg doesn't move much in this alignment. Um, it just kind of takes away part of the, uh, western, uh, part of the intersection, that southwest corner. Um, and so again, those driveways, they actually already come out to one point and so we would just kind of have to modify that a bit. Um, and then on the right-hand side, the eastern 20 leg, uh, there's just one driveway down there to modify, uh, nothing big there. And then on the top, you have two, um, one of them, you know, gets pushed, the road gets pushed further away from, so, you know, the road's further away from their houses. Um, that long skinny one on the top, there's a driveway that goes up to residence up there. Uh, and it goes up that hill that's to the north. It's a dirt, uh, driveway. Uh, so that one, that, yeah, up in there, thank you. That one's behind the retaining wall. Uh, so that would, that's going to need special attention, you know, if this gets selected, this alignment gets selected and there you go, you know, with that. Um, but yeah, basically that gets pushed further back. So, yeah.
Do you guys have any questions?
This is Andrea. Um, I, I'm curious about the, uh, the crossing length of, um, of the, uh, the crossing sections to the, the island. Um, as opposed, you know, just comparing the, the two options, uh, we've got 70 feet crossing Highway 20 on the other option and this one, um, for each leg, uh, how, how far is the crossing?
Definitely, yeah. Let me pull that up, uh, real quick here. Crosswalk, you're good of these ones. Okay, there they are. So they're a lot shorter, uh, because you, uh, you're separating the traffic, um, and you don't have those left turn lanes anymore. Uh, so it looks like just roughly, how many's it, 25? Where's the short one? So anywhere from, you know, something like 13, basically almost just the width of a, of a lane.
Uh huh.
Maybe about 25 feet at the longest, um, for a single, for a single crossing.
Okay. Seems like a, a much, sorry. Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to point out that, um, about what you said, um, Joseph, that, that you didn't, generally don't do, um, roundabouts for pedestrian and bike issues, but for traffic issues. But I think there have been a fair number of vehicle, um, collisions at this intersection. Um, but I don't know what the data is on that, but I think there've been, you know, people turning left and getting hit by oncoming. So I, I'd like to have that factored in there too.
Yeah, that's a great point. And that's one of the issues, uh, thank you for reminding me, that, that we've talked about with our traffic safety branch. Um, you know, so that, having a lot of collisions is basically what, you know, gets a roundabout put there, you know, if, if other options don't make a lot of sense, a traffic signal, you know, anything like that. Um, so the reason nothing's really been done at this intersection, at least, you know, lately, late data, the last three years, there's actually only been one collision here. Um, and so there hasn't been a lot of collisions, but, you know, obviously taking into account, uh, like anecdotal evidence, you know, it's like, you know, people hearing tires screeching all the time, people obviously don't feel safe here, you know, and, you know, we were out there on our walk audit and, you know, I, I get that vibe too. So just because the data doesn't back it up, you know, there's still definitely an issue, but when, you know, you put the, put the numbers into the, they call, uh, like signal warrant analyses, basically can we justify putting in a signal or a roundabout, something here? Uh, you know, the, the numbers don't add up for it. Uh, so it'd be difficult for a traffic safety branch to approve a roundabout, but not possible.
And the other, one of our major funding issue is we don't have the traffic data to generate the funds to do the project. Um, that's, that's why we're recommending that, um, the lo, local agency apply to the ATP and, you know, we can assist with that. I think, um, you know, we can advise you on how to best to obtain the funding. The other thing we're, we can, we're doing is we're just, I don't want to say we're waiting for opportunities, but we're looking for opportunities to fund it through Complete Streets. Um, you know, this, the new, um, the new, the new directive for Caltrans, um, he, he is very interested in Complete Streets and the governor is also, so we are hoping that, um, there's going to be some, um, direction coming from headquarters that's going to allow us to maybe, um, take this project and apply for some funding that may become available in the future. But it's just at this point, um, we just don't have the safety data to, to support. Uh, definitely don't have to support a roundabout, but we prob, we're looking just for opportunities to do what we can. So, that'd really make a lot of sense, so I apologize.
Oh yeah, I think it makes good sense, yeah. We just don't have the data to support anything really. So looking for other opportunities.
I think that actually, I think that actually made a whole lot of sense and I, and I do, I do appreciate that frankness. I am curious, just so that I can understand the process, because the data doesn't exist currently to justify either of these alternatives, how did we get this far that these are even being designed and, and thought of? I'm just, I'm just curious and I, I do appreciate the, um, the efforts thus far.
Yeah, I think, I don't, I don't know all the details, it's a little bit above my, my pay grade. But, uh, they, uh, basically I think, you know, the community expressed concern and, you know, we, we wanted to be good partners and so I don't know how they got the funding to do the project initiation document, but, um, but they did and, you know, we're basically it's a state-sponsored thing, so somehow they got the funding for it. Uh, but, you know, up till, up till this point, you know, obviously nothing's been constructed. The, the one that will be constructed is just happened to be a good timing thing with a project that had extra money and so we snatched that up and used it here as best we could. Um, but yeah, so there's, there's a little bit of money that they, they allowed us to have to, to make this document. Uh, but that's about it. Uh, but we just, we're trying to be, you know, best partners we can be. And yeah, like Robert was saying, there's, there's a, a good interest in Complete Streets, uh, projects.
Joseph, Stephanie I think wanted to add something.
Can I just, I just, it also seems like maybe a little tiny bit of the squeaky wheel gets the grease and that's actually good news for our community because we do, uh, I think a lot of people feel like they haven't been hurt for a long time. So I just really appreciate, um, that it has moved forward this much. So thank you for your involvement.
Yeah, and thank, you know, thank everybody for their involvement.
I just had a quick question about, um, hi.
Robert, I think you're breaking up a little bit there. No. There's somebody, I don't know. Go ahead.
Oh, um, in terms of the city applying for funding, um, I'm not sure that you're aware of, the section of Highway 20 is not actually the city's stretch of highway. I am not accustomed to sort of looking for funds when we don't actually own the highway and I'm not sure that you knew that.
Yeah, I know, it's, uh, it's our right of way, but, okay.
Joseph, Joseph, um, I was just going to give you guys a little bit of, of background. So the project was actually requested by MCOC. Um, they, they requested this project and so we're, we're, we were responding to a request from MCOC just to begin this project. But, um, the other thing, we can apply for funding from ATP, but, um, what I'm hearing from, um, our staff is that for whatever reason, our requests aren't really getting granted that often. It's when the local agencies themselves put in the request that we're getting, uh, we're getting better responses. I don't know, we're not really sure why that is. It may be that they feel that the, the request is coming from the, one of the local agencies and that's really what they want and not necessarily just what we want and we're just looking maybe for an alternative funding source so we can do the projects we want to do versus the projects you all want to do. So I, I think that's part of it. It's, it's kind of a new program too, so I think we're trying to figure our way around it, but, uh, I wanted to comment too on what Madge was saying, that, uh, accidents, the location and, um, one of the things happen is just sometimes if there's accidents, they don't always get reported if nobody gets hurt or it's not a significant crash. It may be, um, crashes and things that maybe aren't getting police reports on or something. If you could get that information in, um, to our traffic safety, that would help to generate a little more, um, a little more information and we could say, well, we don't have reported accidents, but, you know, so if you were, if you could get us some, some of that information, then we could actually record it. I mean, it, it, I know for most people it takes, it's a pretty big deal to, to make a police report and, you know, a lot of people do just change, exchange numbers and drive on and no one ever noticed there was an accident unless, unless you saw or heard about it. So if we could get that information, that would go a long ways towards our future projects. Thank you.
And gentlemen, I used to be the police chief and, uh, and I know that at one point we were asked to do that and so sometimes we would just send a fax with, uh, the log entry that responded, but people just want to report or whatever. So that, that's, that request has been there before. And also I know that, uh, yes, I've been told that if you guys could do it, we could partner up and do it together, some sort of grant process, et cetera. So that's what I've heard in the past when projects have come up in this area. Uh, Joseph, I-
Definitely an option.
Mayor, this is Dusty. I, I wanted to share a few words if that was okay as well.
No, go ahead, Dusty.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dusty Dooley, Community Engagement Director for the City of Willets. And I, I want to share just maybe some personal thoughts as well as some background information that, that I think is, is relevant to tonight's discussion, but, um, Robert and Joseph, thank you for being online tonight with us and for getting these, um, preliminary designs together for these different alternatives. And, um, please tell Mr. Morgan that, well, and then hello from Dusty. Um, so, al, although this is more personal thoughts, but although the improvements proposed, uh, I guess related this year are sincerely appreciated and a step in the right direction, um, which I, you know, certainly commend Caltrans for and encourage others to do the same, I don't know that it'll be fully successful in determining unsafe vehicular speeds or, or satisfy parents and school officials to change their position prohibiting children from front, crossing Highway 20. Um, at the, the previous meeting that was set up by Caltrans and held at the Blosser Elementary School, um, that, that Joseph, uh, mentioned earlier, the, the walk audit, uh, I, I think it was understood that the project being implemented in the coming weeks is, is designed to improve safety in the short term and that a roundabout continues to be the, the long-term solution. And that cert, that thought is certainly consistent with a number of commuting, community meetings that were held around the discussion of pedestrian safety, uh, going back quite a ways. Uh, if you take a look at the Willet's Circulation and Parking Improvement Study, uh, that, that included, uh, community meetings, you know, that plan all the way back to 2002 suggested a roundabout at Highway 20. Uh, same thing with the Willets Bike and Ped specific plan in 2009. Um, you know, it was mentioned that MCOC had requested, uh, this work to be done. Well, the reason why MCOC did, going back to at least the last two versions of, uh, Mendocino County Regional Transportation Plan, uh, the most recent I believe adopted in 2013, we did hold community meetings and a roundabout at Blosser and 20 was identified as the top priority in those community meetings. And, and so that's what pushed, uh, MCOC, I believe, to, um, you know, to communicate, you know, the, the, the need for this type of improvements. you know, the, the, the need for this type of improvements, um, you know, with, within our community here. We just did the, the County Pedestrian Needs Inventory and Engineered Feasibility Study. Um, I might need to look that up, but it's, it's something close to that anyways. And again, a roundabout was identified as a priority improvement in that 2019 document. Now, speaking for my, for a roundabout at that location for a number of reasons, again, I'm a land use, that's a far distance away from the traffic engineering profession, but, you know, my understanding is, you know, vehicles have the choice but to lower their speeds, um, uh, when you, when you do a roundabout and, you know, looking at that design, you have those mid-crossing refuges, I don't know if the rapid slashing beacons stay or not, but that certainly creates a safe crossing for children. You know, I think it also, and I, and I'm repeating stuff that I think everyone knows because you all have been part of this community for a while longer than me. But, you know, that roundabout is going to let drivers know that they're transitioning from that rural highway with, uh, I think it's a 55 mile an hour speed limit, uh, to, to our little urban area, which is a 35 mile an hour speed limit, right? I mean, we all know that feeling of driving back from, from Fort Barron on, on Highway 20 and Joseph was referencing this, right? But on that drive back with all its glorious curves and, and that liberation we feel when we finally get to that straightaway that leads to Willets, right? But, you know, not to justify speeding, but I think I understand why folks, especially those from out of the area, get a little bit of a lead foot when driving along that, that straight. Also, you know, provides an opportunity to establish some gateway signage along with some nice landscaping artwork, uh, you know, whatever designs we come up with to sort of help the image for the, and welcome folks to the city. So, you know, it becomes an opportunity to not only slow down traffic, but sort of lends itself to an opportunity to, to do that gateway signage and provide a good first impression, uh, for those entering the city. So, you know, I, 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 I put some sort of personal thoughts there, but also, um, I think the main reason I wanted to, um, speak up was just to, um, you know, remind the council that there's been quite a bit of, uh, community meetings to support these planning documents, probably going back through in 2002, but, uh, they, they continue to identify a roundabout as a long-term solution, um, and it continues to be a top priority for pedestrian safety for our community amongst, you know, other things, but, um, but anyway, thank, thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to share those thoughts, appreciate it.
Thank you, Dusty, for the historical perspective. I know that, uh, even before I was chief, you did these sort of things and was a roundabout that we talked about. Joseph, do you have more?
Uh, no, that is, that is the, yeah, that's it.
All right, one, one last call for any other questions from the community, otherwise I think we'll need to move on. Anybody else? And Joseph, uh, if the community wants to comment on these plans, where should they send their comments to?
Uh, yeah, um, I guess you can just send them, uh, to my email. Yeah, so Joseph, um, do you want me to just give it to you? I don't know.
Go ahead, the press is here too, so that way...
I can actually put, hi, this is Stephanie, I can actually post your email on our Facebook page and on our, on our website and, and if that's helpful.
That would be great, I, yeah, more feedback, better.
Could you give it now too?
Definitely, yeah, so it's, uh, joseph dot caminiti, which is C-A-M as in Mary, I-N as in Nancy, I-T-I, at d-o-t dot C-A dot gov.
Thank you, sir. Greta, go ahead.
And what is the timeline for any public comment?
Yeah, um, what's it, the 10th? It's already passed, but, uh, would a week work, do you think? Maybe longer? I don't know, I'm looking at the calendar. It doesn't really matter since it's not funded, there's not a strict timeline, so a week, two weeks, what do you guys think?
All right.
Let's say a week and a half, how about next Friday, the 20th?
All right, thank you, sir. All right, Matt, go ahead.
Well, just to point out that, um, at least, well, our local newspapers are not daily and I think this will be the first time that they have access to these two illustrations and it would be not even, one of them comes out on Thursdays, so it'd be a week, well, probably a week from this Thursday. So I'd, I'd like you to give a little more time.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, um...
Thanks.
How about the 27th?
I'm just going to throw, how about, how about, can we make it the, the 30th and just the end of the month? So that gives, the Thanksgiving holiday people can talk about their traffic issues on, you know, when they're...
At the dinner table.
And, and, and it's easy to remember, just, you know, November 30th, end of the month. Would that work for you?
Yeah, works for me.
All right, thank you, Joseph, uh, thank you, Rob. And I think we're going to move on to our next item. Uh, item four, adopt a resolution accepting the construction completion of the Maple Street Pump Station Project, project number 2019 dash 08, on authorizing the filing of the notice of completion. Is this Stephanie or Jeremy, think, Andrea?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here, this is Andrea Trincatos Slater, um, project manager. Yeah, we've, uh, we've completed the project, um, the, the Maple Pump Station Project, um, installed a new housing, um, has a, um, it's, uh, in, in a new building, a machinery block, block building, um, it's replaced, uh, an old pump with, with two new pumps, um, so it's created a, um, a redundant system there. If, if one pump goes out, another one will kick on, um, and, uh, and it's installed , um, new electrical controls, um, this will create, uh, or it has created, um, uh, you know, a more reliable system, um, for the, the northwestern portion of, um, town. It's like, it's the zone, um, that's, that's, uh, basically kind of south of, um, of that pump station. So, yeah, we're just asking for, uh, a notice of completion to be approved, um, uh, and with that, does anybody have any questions about the project?
Council members, start off with Greta. Go ahead.
Uh, I just wanted to say, um, nice work, um, engineering, um, it looks really fantastic. We walked by it the other night and I wondered, is there any, um, possibility of putting a City of Willets logo on the building or something to indicate that it's, um, a city, um, facility? I think that, um, the public would be, um, pretty jazzed to realize that that's where their tax dollars went and it's a, it's a good looking structure.
Thank you, um, yeah, I mean, I think we can, we can discuss that, um, putting some, some signage up or, or something, um, to indicate that it's a City of Willets, uh, facility. It was designed to be consistent with, with our other pump houses, um, Scott, Scott Herman oversaw the, the look of the building and made it consistent with, with the other ones. And, uh, and yeah, we could talk to, um, Public Works about creating some kind of signage.
Uh, Suprema, do you have anything?
No, no comment.
Match? That says no comment, Larry?
Yes, I have some, some things. I wanted to know how come that the electrical box is still where it used to be and it ran underneath the ground, the new one? I was just surprised that it wouldn't all have been involved in one item and have the, for the, like Christie comes in, would be at the building. I've just asked that, a question.
You know, Larry, I, I don't have a, an answer prepared for you on that, I will have to con, consult, um, Scott Herman. He, he worked with the electrical end of things and he would know about that. But I do know, uh, a new panel was installed as part of that.
Okay, I, I was just interested in knowing, you know, about that and, uh, it's interesting that we spent that much money and then had the old panel box. Anyhow, that's my question.
I just want to say, I... Andrea?
Okay, I, I do know we, we installed a new panel as part of the, um, the project, uh, so I'll, I'll, um, get some information and, and, um, update you on that.
Thank you very much.
Andrea, I noticed that generators, I'm assuming that's a generator that's been there, I'm assuming that was preemptive of the PG&E, uh, that to shut off, was that correct?
Yeah.
Right, at this point, anybody from the public that would like to ask any questions on this? Going, going, gone. Um, I just want to note that according to the staff report that while we, cost was over, we did come in on budget or under budget, is that correct?
Yeah, sufficient funds were budgeted to cover the cost of the contract. It spanned over multiple years as well, so...
Right, thank you very much for clarifying that too. Right, at this point, I guess what I'd be looking for is a motion, um, your adopt a resolution.
This is Larry and I would recommend, uh, the recommended action.
Is that match?
Will second it.
Right, uh, motion to second, any further discussion? Right, uh, Kathy, call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie. Rodriguez.
I'll be abstaining because it's 20 feet from my home.
Strong.
Yes.
Stransky.
That.
Mayor Fizalas.
Uh, yes, and again, thank you, everybody. All right. All right, now, moving on to item five, general discussion city businesses relates to COVID-19 public health crisis.
Good evening, this is Stephanie Gilbert, CEO, City Manager. Um, at our last meeting, we discussed, uh, COVID and playgrounds and how can we can get our playgrounds open. We heard you loud and clear that we needed to, to try and do that as, as quickly as possible and as safely as possible. At the last meeting of, uh, with city managers and the county health official, um, we spoke to the health official and we brought Kenan in with us to really, uh, drill down on that. And as a response, Kenan has been working on a plan that fits within our parameters and he is here, uh, this evening to discuss, um, how we're going to get playgrounds open because he's worked extremely hard on putting together a plan. So I'd like to introduce Ken O'Shea, our Public Works Superintendent.
Kenan? Go ahead. Good evening, Mayor and council members, thank you for your time this evening, thank you for the intro, Stephanie. Like we, like she mentioned before, we've, we've been working on what we can do at the city to kind of get the playgrounds open and available for the children. And, uh, when we started kind of putting our policies together and drafting things, it was kind of encouraging to see when we started comparing those and collaborating with these other cities that we're all kind of on the same page and facing similar challenges. So it's just kind of, uh, you know, collaboration of what they have done and what they're putting in place and that we think we can make happen with our staff and our resources. And, uh, I'd like to just kind of read through that and share that with you. I apologize if it sounds rehearsed, but I'm just going to kind of literally read through it with you just to kind of let you know what we came up with. Due to the state and CDC guidelines in place to attempt to slow the spread of COVID-19, the city has developed this plan to reopen our park playgrounds and restrooms with these new sanitization procedures and policies implemented for public safety. And these are just some key things that we kind of had to get in place or make sure that we could be in compliance with before we could really introduce the playgrounds to the public again. So, um, it included installation of antibacterial hand soap dispensers in all the open restrooms at both Snyder Park and Recreation Grove and, uh, we'll be checking those daily. Daily sanitization and thorough cleaning of all sinks, toilets and touchable surfaces in the restrooms with a product designed to neutralize virus and bacteria, um, especially COVID-19. Restrooms and drinking fountains may be closed or limited, so people will be encouraged to please plan ahead. Increase to improve signage at the main entrance points to the park, asking visitors to social distance, wear masks when appropriate and limit occupancy of the playgrounds. There will be, uh, maximum occupancy signs for the play structures themselves. Um, gatherings will be, uh, of more than three households and gatherings over 20 people are prohibited. People will be also asked to refrain from eating or drinking while on the playground. A lot of this is going to rely on new signage and that's going to have to be, uh, in both English and Spanish and we're going to have to put up, um, signs at all the entrance points, the playgrounds to advise visitors to bring hand sanitizer and wipes, um, wash hands before and after using the playground equipment and to please refrain from using the equipment if they have had any symptoms of COVID-19 or have been in direct contact with a COVID-19 positive individual in the last 14 days. And once again, um, these will all be in English as well as Spanish and with signs, as everybody knows, you don't want to make them too complicated or wordy because people aren't going to really bother to read them. So this is kind of like an overview of our policies that we're, that we're going to have to adhere to and then the signs will be a lot simpler and a lot more spelled out just so that everybody's on board with that. Benches and single family sized picnic tables will be available, but large picnic areas with multiple tables or benches will remain closed as to not invite overlapping of small approved gatherings and stable groups of visiting families. Benches and tables deemed usable under the guidelines will also be cleaned and wiped down daily. All high-touch surfaces on the playground equipment will also be wiped down daily. All cleaning of bathrooms, play equipment, benches and picnic tables will be done first thing in the morning before opening. Restrooms will be locked nightly by dusk and reopened again by 9:00 AM the following morning. Adjusted hours for the parks will be posted and may be reduced as needed. On days with heavy rain, snow, seasonal flooding, freezing temperatures, uh, restrooms may be closed. Playground equipment will not be wiped down on the days where rain makes playground equipment unusable. That's just kind of common sense. If it's pouring out, pouring rain out, I don't, I don't think we'll be able to really do much about the surface, we'll just have to let the rain do the washing. The city will continue to monitor the parks to gauge compliance with the county public health order and should that order be modified or further restrictions put in place, the city will have to evaluate its ability to safely provide these facilities. Basically, it's going to come down to Public Works and, uh, a little more time in the parks. We've always cleaned and sanitized the bathrooms on a regular basis, but now we're going to be including the tables and benches and the play structures as well. So that, that takes people off the streets a little more and it commits more resources to these endeavors, but that's the commitment we're willing to make and we want to see these, these playgrounds open and usable. Some of you may or may not know that Public Works, uh, on-call staff will probably be in charge of coming in on Saturdays and Sundays to make this happen. We're going to offer the cleaning on a, on a daily basis, so if we're going to keep the parks open on Saturdays and Sundays where, that's where the working folks and a lot of, a lot of people like to use the parks, so if we're going to keep them open, we're going to have to include cleaning them on the weekends, which there'll be a little bit of an added cost there on, on our end because we're paying someone to come in and do that. And, uh, there's going to be a little more of a cost, you know, cleaning supplies and that sort of thing, but we have received, received some COVID-19 relief funds and we're hoping that we can maybe use some of those to offset the costs. Should the restrooms require, uh, more cleaning than the allotted three hours, then further overtime may result. We'll have to make sure and increase our supplies of personal protection equipment for that sort of, uh, service as well. So I'm just kind of alluding to the fact that we will be putting a little bit more money out to make this happen, but I think we all agree that it's a worthwhile expense. And I just wanted to also kind of reiterate that it's not going to be the responsibility of the police department or the Public Works or any other city staff to enforce these rules and that it's really going to be up to the people who choose to use these facilities to evaluate the situation and, uh, use them essentially at their own risk. I mean, there's going to be people who pack their kids up and go to the park and plan on using it and they're going to get there and it's going, might be crowded, so we're going to kind of recommend that they choose alternate times and, and just be flexible and know that they might be waiting, you know, there's going to be a 30-minute wait time on, on structures at times because we're going to ask that people play for 30 minutes or less just to be respectful of everybody so that we can all... everybody so that we can all use the facilities together. If there's any questions or comments, I'll stay on the line.
I'll go in order, all right, I'll start with Greta today. Greta?
I just wanted to say, this is awesome. Thank you so much, Kenan. I think the community is going to be really happy with this.
Suprema?
Yeah, I appreciate your talk, and I'm pleased to see that the city is able to adhere to the state's guidelines. These are the same guidelines that I was under the impression that we should be operating under. I do understand that the cause that we're talking about is, as you stated before, cleaning on the restrooms and cleaning of the equipment about three hours a day, and I do believe that it's worth the time and the money to ensure that we have this available for our community. And I'm very glad to hear that we're not talking about the need to get out the hose and wash the equipment or anything of that nature anymore, so kudos to all of you who worked hard on this. Thank you.
Edge, do you have anything? Questions? No, probably not.
Please, also, thank you.
Larry, do you have any questions?
No, I have no questions, but I want to thank very much the public works for doing this and the time that they spent on figuring it out. I just think it's really worthwhile, and I thank you guys very, very much, and just thank you very much. Thank you.
And Kenan, again, I echo everybody's thanks. I do have one question for you. Obviously, if for some reason things go south and the county locks things up, I guess that would change how you're doing things. Is that correct?
Unfortunately, yes, and that's where it's going to come down to all of you guys helping us out and putting it out there that we really need the community to follow, follow in and help us keep the parks open. It's going to come down to everybody just working together on this. So thank you guys for the support, and we look forward to getting the parks open. We're shooting to implement early next week once we get our signs in place and figure out the last few details, we should be good to go. So thank you all for your time.
All right, Greta?
I also just wanted to take this moment to Kenan, say thank you so much to Public Works for what you've done in the public restrooms there. They look fantastic. I know you're not on social media, but the post from the community development department was shared on the fan page and the 95490 awareness page, and you've been deluged with community love, so it's a huge improvement, and I hope you can feel it even though you don't read all that.
I definitely do, and I'll pass those words on to my staff because they're really the ones to thank for all the work. If it wasn't for them, then we would all be still grasping at straws, so I'll pass it on to the people who deserve it. Thank you.
All right, just to put it out, if anybody from the community wants to ask questions? Ron, ready?
Well, it's nice to see that the playgrounds will open up, and Kenan, you guys, all of you do such a great job, so kudos there. I want to just say a few things about COVID-19 in the county. The mask-up Mendocino program, Mendo program, is going along great. We're still delivering masks and sanitizer, I said earlier. But two points, well, actually one, but two situations with this point, is we have garnered some funding to add billboards in the center section of the north side of Ukiah. We're coming into the holiday season, we're going to see lots of travelers coming through town and headed for the coast, obviously. These billboards hopefully will make individuals realize they have to continue to wear masks and sanitize. We want to keep that point out there for those visitors that come to our area. And the other thing is, it's a heavy shopping time for our businesses here in town, and we generally have a program called Shop Small Saturday, which is one day after Thanksgiving on a Saturday to let shops really take advantage of, or shoppers take advantage of special deals that our merchants put in. Realizing that with COVID-19, our shops cannot allow too many individuals into their shops at one time, we've expanded that program to two other Saturdays prior so that individual shops can have specials if they choose. We'll be doing some advertising, we're doing some special giveaways, then we'll run those three Saturdays and culminate on November 28th, that typical Saturday that is Shop Small Saturday. So we're trying to help our businesses continue to have their specials throughout the holiday season, but expand some of the situations so that we can give them a greater opportunity to allow shoppers to come into their shop and get those deals and shop locally so we can make our businesses strong as they still face the struggles that they do. I just wanted to let you know about those two things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Anything else on this subject? Anybody at the city? So parks or anything else? I guess I'll throw it out. Stephanie, anything?
I have nothing further to share. Thank you. I don't think we are meeting this week because our Wednesday meeting is, everybody's closed for returns day, so we won't be meeting with that county health officer this week.
All right. Well, I think at this point, we have items proposed session.
I think Manchester, do you end up? I'm sorry.
Yeah. Can I just make an announcement of an important community event, which is on Sunday, this coming Sunday, the 15th, at 3:00, there's a town hall forum with Supervisor John Hascheck, and if anyone wants to get the link for that, they can email me, but please use my home email rather than my city email. It's mstrong@willitsonline.com, and I can send you the link. It'll be obviously by Zoom, but it's an opportunity for people to not only ask questions but give feedback to our third district supervisor, 3:00 on Sunday, the 15th. Thank you.
Okay, at this point...
Jerry, I'm sorry, this is Andrea Trincatos Slater. I have a quick announcement from Public Works and Engineering, and I just wanted to share that we received the final closeout for the Railroad Avenue Bridge project. We received a reimbursement check for approximately $87,000, and that project is now, the grant funding for that project is now closed out. I know that was identified as one of the city's goals, and we're really happy about this, and our administrative assistant, Brandy Sanderson, was a huge help in getting this done.
That's great news, Andrea. Thank you very much.
Great job, Andrea. Thank you.
Okay, we are on item six, closed session notice, conference with labor negotiations pursuant to government code 54957.6, employer organization, Willits Police Officers Association. And then item B, pursuant to government code 54957, recruitment of potential public employee appointment, city manager. If I have anything to report out, I will come back and report it out, otherwise I'll have a quick five-minute break, and then I'll meet the closed session. But we'll start out with the police officer.
Thank you.
Thank you.